...community participation program funding. We were talking about deleting that, did we delete that or did we not delete that? What we're gonna do is we're gonna delete that whole thing? Or just the part, just the last part?
As they, you now says it.
I mean, you know, there aren't a lot of Phase Two plans left.
Just question you all.
How?
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, if I were on the city council, if I were looking at this, I might say, hmm, we're willing to, the policy board isn't gonna do too much then, I guess. Because there's only about two Phase Two plans left or three, maybe one or two Phase One. And then some plan modifications, which hopefully there will be very few of these. Is that all we really want to have them do? I mean, maybe if we, I mean, if we, if they don't do any of the CPP, the CPP of priority plans. Well, anyway, I'm just looking for the answer.
If I may, Commissioner Pass, yes, you're right. Phase, there's, I think there's about six neighborhoods that actually have Phase Two to go through. So the policy board will be doing the admin around Phase One Plan Mods, the adoption of the remaining Phase Two plans, and any Plan Mods that come from that. They would also be doing the CPP applications and enabling priority plans from the CPP for the period up through 2013, right? At least tracking my dates here. And then that's where the Strand Resolution comes in. It's after that point, then that authority would come back to this body. But the development and design of the CPP still rests with the body during that initial period. It's just the approval process then transfers to the policy board. So the policy board will be busy for two years for sure. After that, it will probably be meeting quarterly at that.
And this is basically proposed of city council members and their staff?
It's the proposed membership of the policy board would be one mayor of the mayors, doesn't the council president, Tampa County Hart Board, school board, state house rep, state senate rep, which are the legislative requirements, and then four reps, what point by NCCs?
So going back to, do we think that there's, do we need to add a clause to reflect Commissioner Heinz's concerns that it's included, that our prior purposes are included? And, or are we okay with the way it is?
I mean, I'm taking that as direction of the staff and we will follow that as we drive.
Do you need additional?
I think if there is a consensus that that's our intent, I don't need to add it in here as long as it's, if there's consensus that that's our intent.
Do we have?
I agree with that and I think the intent is important because you see the threads historically from the community task force forward in the name of resolution. So yes, as long as the intent is, is.
Is there consensus, I'm gonna say this so we can make sure it's written out, is there consensus that we direct to staff that the intent is we maintain our existing purposes in the name of the staff?
Yes.
Do you have that? All right. Commissioner Hohmeyer?
No. That's been said and done.
All right, so, any, what other pieces within this that you have objections to or questions on? Going back to my, that's a long time, it's Commissioner Strand.
Actually, the, one of the few things I have to suggest that I should mention that Commissioner Perry isn't two, the resolving clause two. I believe there should be something dealing with neighborhood programming or neighborhood programs that if, going forward to the next, not just the eighteen months, but through 2020, that I think we should not just specify appeals, grievances, and designation, but we should, because of the future, make reference to neighborhood programming or neighborhood programs. So just a very small addition to recognize that there may be non-NRP programs that this body ought to be responsible for oversight.
Do you have suggestive language?
Well, I said neighborhood programming, neighborhood programs.
And where would you, do you want that, where do you want it? Or Commissioner Perry, do you have a, do you?
I'm wondering why it's not taken care of in the partner resolving clause. It mentions programs, the actions, policies, and programs.
Commissioner Strand?
Well, only because number two is more specific and perhaps could be seen as more ready. That when we have a second resolving clause that's more specific and is restrictive to appeals, grievances.
So the, number one is supposed to be programs for whatever we do. Number two is some specific things that we have in, that aren't programs, that somebody needs to do. And in some cases, right now, they're being dealt, they're being done by some other entity in the city. So I'm saying, do you want those?
Commissioner Perry?
Strand, maybe number one, could you, could you accept if we said oversight of neighborhood programs? So those are not barely studying?
Okay.
The point being, I think there will be a point in time when we will step back, hopefully January first, 2014, those who are still here, will step back into that oversight role. And so I'm just concerned about limiting the scope and the purposes too narrowly, looking into the future through 2020.
I would argue the way that it's worded, again, to try and be broad enough, is the CPP program, we are creating that, we will continue to own that if this is adopted. And the reason why is because of number one and number three. And so I think you're trying to chew on a word in there, but I don't, I think maybe we'll have less, people are really going, what is this oversight? We have one and three together, a pretty volatile statements about our authority to have oversight. And again, I kept in mind the fact that this body may choose that it wants to argue vigorously that we should be doing the CPP plan, up to a little scale. But we definitely aren't gonna lose the ability, one and three are the things that enable us to do programming. I don't know if that helps you or not.
Does that resolve your objection?
Well, you know, I'm not convinced, if I'm only one voice, I would say in a way certainly, but I'm, I'm not completely convinced that it's covered. I'd rather be more, have it out there and stated very clearly. I would not raise the concern that I thought it was as clear as, or whether Commissioner Sead.
Commissioner Heinz?
Hey, the only thing that needs to be in the second point, more of this is just as a question, this is more of our visionary statement rather than a laundry list of, this is what we're gonna do. I actually think it's helpful to have the last sentence, Commissioner, let us make the recommended neighborhood organizations in the city. I actually don't think that we need the rest of it because to a certain degree, like if you go back to our CPP guidelines, it actually lays out what the process is for appeals and things like that in there. So I actually don't need the rest to say, I don't think it fits with the kind of visionary part of the rest of it, because all of a sudden you start out with programs and you have appeals, grievances, and things like that. The one part of that that I think is worth preserving is, because this is actually a real question, is how our official neighborhood organization designated in the city. But other than that, I don't actually think that we need the rest of it, because all of that will actually come out of the programs. So as long as we are making recommendations on programs and getting hopefully what we want, then the rest of that clause would actually be taken care of in those program amendments.
So consider that. Commissioner.
Commissioner Strand ever suggested what you're giving in as a philosophical difference solution. Commissioner Perry wrote one document, you wrote another, you wrote visionary, you wrote nuts and bolts, and now you're trying to throw a nut and bolt into the visionary. And you, at Timberline, just do a bolt from pretty much alone. They're both in the, they're.
Commissioner Hofer?
I just wanted to, space regarding the cultivate relationship component in each document, it doesn't require any language change, but I ran through some of the neighborhood people and it just wanted me to bring forward the fact, the liaison language, that, I would say is that, they don't wanna in any way think they have to go through anybody, they wanna have a direct contact with the city, which is in their best interest. And I said, of course I'll bring that up and of course that's what we need. But the body to NCC, see, if we can assist neighborhood, obviously be a liaison, but it's not mandatory thing, it's not perfect. But I promised I'd say that, so.
Commissioner Perry, you're like, or, again, Commissioner Strand? I apologize for just making that an example. Did the, the point that you have, did you want to press that or were you going to?
You know, further to the group, I will accept the explanation.
I am intrigued by Commissioner Heinz's suggestion. Okay, so moving on to our, the next point, to Commissioner Heinz's point to delete all on number two except for the last sentence, is that what you suggested?
It is an option that I think would clarify it. I, I always favor making things, especially the resolving, as simple and as clear as
The reason why I was included was to grab some things that nobody else, or I should say, other people are doing that I thought we should be doing. If it's better to.
And it's not something I feel strongly about, because in the end, all this actually is gonna do is inform staff, get rewritten resolution, so it kinda doesn't, it's the last, these are the last two pages of a long document.
All right. Hopefully they're more, they'll be, they'll be included as appendixes as well, but I'm assuming that they are informing actual staff policy.
If that's where.
Yes. All right.
I have a technical thing I would add to that, if we keep that in, which it sounds like we're going to, one second.
Yes, that's how I'm reading this.
Any NRP, I'd like to add in again, Phase One or Phase Two plans. In number two, first sentence, end of it, says any NRP plans. I say Phase One or Phase Two, in case someone gets the idea of a Phase Three. Good.
Mr. Thompson has that up there.
Question. Oh, you see it? All right, is there consensus to have that?
Yes.
All right, other items to discuss on this? Do we have consensus to approve this document?
Yes.
Yep. Seeing that we have consensus.
I have a question.
Yes.
As if we move forward, will the offers continue to have their aim high or don't we? Right.
This is not written by us. Yes, see, see. That is the, the point of our, the consensus model, that it becomes us. Next up, we're looking at Commissioner Strand's piece, and thinking back to who was in the queue, Commissioner Perry.
I assume you wanna take these in order or if not?
Yes, same thing as before, I would prefer that we start at the top and go through these.
Because the first, the first item I have, what I would like to talk about is number four, so maybe on this.
Thank you for coming up with the number four.
I'm not dealing with the whereas as I can, there's a lot of material there.
All right, so let's.
Look at the resolving clauses.
How are we on number one? Is there consensus on number one? Maybe I should have done this with Perry as well. Is, okay, number one.
I, I, go ahead, I, I, I'm forming a thought on one of the whereas clauses that I may have an issue with.
Okay.
I am not.
Sorry, you can always come back. See, number one is looking good, number two. Number two seems to be okay, number three. I'm just impressed that I figured out the exigencies.
And then you get to say that.
And I can say it and it's tight, tight.
Yeah, but you gotta put part of the swear jar now.
All right, hit on that. All right. See? Okay. Well, Commissioner Hofer.
Well, here you go, I would say, taking out the exigencies, like, we thought we'd say that the NCC recommends against having the city take out budget, I think is political, take out exigencies, I say that NCC recommends against the city actions taken in September 2010, harming faces.
So there's a suggestion to change the language that.
Delete the words.
I think he's got it up on the.
Yeah. That would be right.
Yep. We still would have all have gotten some of those good exigencies. Commissioner Strand? Thoughts on this? Thoughts?
Commissioner Heinz?
I'd be strongly, support of that. Actually, if you go back to that earlier whereas clause, I, I don't wanna give the council any like, oh, this is okay. They get it, and I can respond to what they did, but I don't wanna give them anything that says we're okay with what they do. I don't think we need to have it here, it's a different discussion, but I would pull that language out and say, this is what happened, this is the resulting, this is our recommendation, and not do any difference.
Is there consensus to tweak the language to this?
Striking those three words. Exigencies of the budget.
The NCC recommends against having the city actions taken in December 2010, harming the basis.
Four.
Yeah, and there's, if there's inges and ed's that need to be leaned up a little bit. The NCC recommends against having the city actions taken in December 2010, harm the basis of policy formulation. That's fine. Commissioner Strand?
I'm fine, everyone knows what we're referring to?
Yes. Okay. All right.
Well, I don't even know if I want them to form the basis of the EDP for the period between July 12th and 2012. But then.
Yeah.
I don't wanna send to anyone.
Mr. Facilitator, do you wanna go back and get Commissioner Heinz's concern about use that word elsewhere?
I mean, I have to, I have to, if I say this, I don't, I would disassociate, object to the whole thing, the taking of money in general.
And I hear what you're saying. I don't, I just don't think that we can.
I don't care, it's all okay.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Heinz, I believe you're, you were talking about some of the whereas and the last one, I think it's the next one to this, so, Tom Smith, you can go up to the last whereas, you need to just do a little bit of, probably straight up to actions, I think. So just whereas the, maybe just deletes, yeah, certain actions in December 2010 by the council. I think we have, okay, there was some. Commissioner Hofer, what do you have?
On that, the last verb for clause. Says whereas, comma, insert, the city took, then delete certain budget exigencies necessitated. So we, whereas the city took action in December 2010, then delete by the city council and mayor to provide property tax relief. So it picks up through the, then delete the word used and put in the word taking of uncontracted and then it continues on. So after editing, he would read, whereas the city took action in December 2010 through the taking of uncontracted Phase Two NRP funding, et cetera.
I really like it because it's factual, in other words, it's not abbreviated and more whereas, the saving of the fact. The other way to, I, I.
How is, is this, this language acceptable to Commissioner?
Fine. Can I get an opinion from our attorney?
On the.
To me, sitting in zoning board of the Gussman, and as its chair, I hear a government taking that needs something very specific, and if it's what you imply, then that, I'll give all of this language out of line.
Would you be comfortable with stealing?
That's the part that I'm not, if we're gonna make a statement about the city council action, let's make that statement elsewhere. That's not the place for this.
This, well, this, the problem is, this has a statement about it and it buys into the theory that it's the property tax. I don't believe it, I believe it was put in gainsmanship, but then they need the property tax. So I don't want that language in there because of exactly the reasons you just mentioned there.
As, as long as we are just limiting ourselves, not making illegal statements about taking by.
I'm not, I'm not wedded to the verb taking, if there is an alternative, but through the, through.
Capturing.
Controlling, through.
Well.
How.
Your right hand.
Capturing. How about, yes, let's come back to the word taking, let's just see if we can think of this, because I don't wanna spend much more time on the word taking, but I don't even, we need to come back to it before we finalize this. Everything else in here is okay except for the word taking at this point, all right? Commissioner, Commissioner Pass?
But I just, I just wanna say that, I, I think that if we just stick to the facts, we should be okay, but it wasn't, it's not being used for property tax relief and that never was, it's intended to provide for this, for this committee and this, or this department in the future. So that, so this is needed factually.
Yeah, and so that's the taking out.
Okay, but I mean, I think that.
So take, take a look at this and I, I think that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, so we, we can come back to taking, but I wanna move this on.
I'm gonna make a proposal, just that it reads, and I don't wanna shut up. Whereas the city took certain actions in December 2010 involving uncontracted Phase Two NRP funding. That's as neutral as I can get it.
Okay?
All right.
It's less factual.
I think as you're making the assumptions, this might be as close as we can get to consensus. Can we live with the word involving? Yes, thank you. All right, moving back into, we're on number four, Commissioner Perry.
I think again here, I wanna be very specific about Phase One and Phase Two. Rather than bopping on that, just have the staff figure that out, please, for the same reasons that I stated before, about being specific about Phase One and Phase Two.
So number four, the only items do you wanna change that specifically calls out are Phase One and Phase Two?
Please.
I agree.
Oh, I do have one other suggestion.
Okay, before we use that, are we all okay with that, as we have been before? Mr. Rubidore?
Well, I just, one question on that is, the CPP uses NRP money and that that role would fall with the policy board. The way that reads here, if you just put Phase Two in there, that wouldn't be the case, that's where we're gonna run into conflict with the term. So, yeah, go ahead, quarter pipe, maybe you would.
I think, I think, David, here's where we need to draw distinction between what we as a commission want and what the council's gonna end up adopting. And so I think we've all been clear that if it was up to us, we would keep the plans, approval, and all of that with us and not chip it over to the policy board. We understand that legally, the city council may choose a different path, but I think it's important that we convey, because all we're doing is recommending a course of action. What we're adopting is not gonna be the final ordinance.
Okay, but this is, this will, if people are clear, that when the, when you see the resolutions, that authority's gonna be with the policy board, and this will be conveyed to the council as your statement of, 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 of this issue. Okay, I just wanna make sure people are okay with that.
So we're good with putting in the initial Perry, NRP Phase One, Phase Two, but we're gonna need to come to a decision on that second point, Commissioner Heinz, just laying out. Commissioner Perry, do you have initial piece in that, and then we're gonna come back to give you the policy?
This might turn, it's on its head, but we'll see what Commissioner Strand says about this. In the, in the final sentence, it says fulfill the policy board's purposes that are defined. I would suggest we say fulfill the NCEC's purposes, period, delete the rest. How about them apples?
The last or, we would say, or to the NCEC to fulfill the purposes of the NCEC, the NCEC purposes.
Period, and delete the rest.
Commissioner Strand?
Well, I guess, completely contrary to the intent of the drafter in that I was looking specifically at section 469, point 1831, and referring to the clause that speaks about agreements, that the policy board may ensure agreements with other government agencies or nongovernmental entities to fulfill its purposes. And so, as Commissioner Heinz and I maybe are making a futile argument that the attorneys don't accept, but I think we're suggesting that, that there be some way to actually devolve those authorities to the NCEC. So I'm not in opposition to the thought of fulfilling the NCEC's purposes, but I'm actually capturing language that is specific, fairly specific to these statutes.
I think I.
Sure. Yes. So I think we're getting to, within this, we need to make a policy recommendation, I'm going to suggest that we are not going to get to consensus, even if we talked about it all, all day. The two points of view are that, one, the NRP policy board delegates the entire CPP oversight process and approval to this group, the NCEC. Or two, the NRP policy board maintains oversight of the CPP application process.
If I may, coming at that, just to number five, number five actually clarifies my point, and that's just what you're saying up there, to, to Fisher Heinz's point, they're stating a purpose or an attempt, but in number five, clearly acknowledging that the policy board's role will be limited for a specific period of time. So I read that as, and coming into that time period, you want all of that back.
Yes.
So to me, it's, it's. My issue's addressed in five.
Okay.
So should I suggest, you know, to accept Commissioner Perry's suggested change if you put after the word devolve, as permitted by the NRP law, comma, by agreement, and then accept Commissioner Perry's other change? So the policy board shall delegate or devolve as permitted by the NRP law, comma, by, well, to the extent.
Okay, fine, to the extent. You wanna say it one more time?
To the extent as permitted by the NRP law, comma.
My intent here is to have the NCEC redefine its purpose and the NRP policy board delegates to us what we need to do our job.
And the intent is actually very close, I don't think that we're different on the intent.
I don't either, just trying to be more.
No, okay, so I think we need commas around that, say, right?
Yeah.
Now on the to the extent. Sorry, I, now I'm doing it.
Yes, what are you doing?
Wow, I apologize, folks, and I, I take back that I just, I flaked out for a moment.
What did you say?
Commas is whatever, that's fine. I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I don't care. What you decide, staff. Is this okay to, to everyone? Look at that. We have consensus on this, good work. Number five, this is the statement that's for eighteen months old.
Yes.
Number six, staff had pointed out before that this was something that might be in contradiction to what they had put together. So this is saying that we recommend that. Strand, Commissioner Strand, you want?
Well, here's why I'm offering this up as its written. The neighborhoods through the electoral process, for many years, elected neighborhood representatives to the existing, the old NRP policy board. Neighborhoods elected or selected that need neighborhood representatives to the NCEC. However, during the previous and the most recent NCEC elections, to the best of my knowledge, nobody stood out there and said, well, by the way, you're also gonna be electing representatives representatives to serve on the 2012 NRP policy board, this is the city's going to be newly creating. And so, that's the rationale, that unless we were to say, you know, wipe everything out, hold grand to elections, I'm not suggesting that, I don't think it was, you know, truth in advertising, so to speak, and so, and another thing is that the NRP policy is being carried forward, there's an NRP, a policy board election procedure and policy. So again, that's something the city has to reconcile in the transition.
Mr. Rubedar?
Just a couple things, and there, the, as I mentioned, the, the staff recommendation on this one is that it would be NCEC reps that would be appointed to the policy board to service the neighborhood reps there. During the interim period, which would be January through June, that we would just take from the pool that we have, as far as advertising correctly, post that time period, then when the new elections come up, people would be aware of that, and those positions would be served that way. The second thing is, is that it would provide continuity or clarification of communication between the policy board and the NCEC, again, trying to keep that control of the community participation program with, with this particular body. And the third thing, I mean, to be quite blunt about it, is when you guys were talking about limiting the role of the policy board, it's making sure that the NCEC stays in a leadership role, for lack of a better way to put it. By continuing to build additional institutions around that board, you actually, you basically are setting it up to have legs that go further out. So given that this is a fairly short period of time, and also the need to have that connection between the NCEC and we have neighborhood reps on the NCEC, that, that just seemed to be a real logical way to set it up.
Commissioner Perry?
As much as I agree with everything Director Rubedar just said, going to do, it all makes sense, we're sort of jumping to the conclusion of what we want, and so, which I think is maybe not what this is, a specific implementation, I would say that to be, do good public participation, rather than confirm, because neighborhood organizations are not going to get the, here's what we want, and get exactly what we want. City council has to make that decision, but change confirm with to involve. That means, that's not in form, that's involved.